Steve, at the moment, we just have four members. Fred was not connected with, so we don't know where, but where he is at the moment. So just to get it out of the way, Jim Chandler cannot be here tonight. We're not sure about Dick Blaws. So just to get this out of the way while I wait a few minutes. Let me see what we have there. I'm going to go into the minutes. So first, the minutes for case number 10. This is the property of 16 Holly Ridge Drive with the in-law apartment. And let's see who was present. Well, it looks.
I wasn't in.
No, myself, Wayne and Bob Keeman. So we got, we got three people who can act on this. Give a motion.
Motion to approve the minute.
All right, Mr. Keeman, second.
Second.
All right, just to take the vote formally, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes, 3-0. Minutes for case number 11. Again, it would be the three of us. Mr. Andrews, Mr. Keeman and myself, even though Mr. Keeman didn't sit on it, he was present at the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve case number 11?
I'll make the motion to approve case 11.
Second, Mr. Andrews.
I'll second.
All right, the vote on it, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
John Gold Rosen, yes, 3-0. And case number 12, which is 864 Bedford Street, the one that we allow to withdraw without prejudice. Same, same three people.
I make a motion to approve the minute, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second, Mr. Keeman?
Second.
All right, and I vote on it, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Myself, John Gold Rosen, yes, 3-0 for case number 12. And the general minutes, again, same three people will vote on this one.
I'll make the motion to approve the general minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Vote on it, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes, there you go. All right. Well, Mr. Witkowski, if you can, let me explain the situation to you. If you can, yeah, I see your back. So we have four members present out of the five-member board. We, we can wait a few more minutes and see if, if either of the two missing people can attend, because otherwise you would need a unanimous vote. I guess we could, we could appoint a temporary board member, I suppose, but that person would have a conflict of interest being retired. So we, we only have four members present. You need four votes in favor to approve the petition. And if we have five people, that means you can have one person opposed and it could still be approved. But with four people, all four would have to approve. And I always give an applicant the option of postponing the hearing if, when we only have four people here. So I'd like to wait five more minutes anyway, and then see how we're going to proceed. But you can think that over in the meantime.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Witkowski, we're ready to move ahead. I'm going to call this case to order. This is case number 13. Location of property, 14 Mayflower Circle. Type of district, A1. Type of structure, addition. Owner's name, Andy Witkowski, on his address, 14 Mayflower Circle. When did you acquire this property? August 2020. It's application been filed with town clerk. It doesn't say has any previous appeal been made, no. Section of bylaw which relief is requested in-law, which is section 6, 6-6. Reason for asking leave for special permit for an in-law. This case was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on October 22nd and 29th. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Andrews, Mr. Keeman, Mr. Cacciatore, Mr. Blaws and myself, John Gold Rosen. At this time, we'll have the reading of the list of abudders unless I hear a motion. Just to note for the record, the only other people in attendance at the moment are Secretary Carol O'Brien, the Building Inspector, Robert Curran, the applicant, Andy Witkowski. Also in attendance, Ryan Tully from Cable Television and Mr. Frederick Kavicki, who's in attendance at the moment, but is here for the next hearing. So we do not have any abudders present at the meeting. So based on that, do you have a motion to waive the reading of the list of abudders?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Andrews, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Blaws, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, I'll take the vote on it, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Cacciatore?
Yes.
Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes. Give me a minute while I bring up, I'm going to go to share the screen and let's see how I get to. Trying to find how to connect to my documents.
I have an icon that says share screen on mine.
Yeah, I've clicked on that, but it's not showing me. Let me try. I'm trying to figure out how to connect to my, to my documents. Ryan Tully, can you give me any?
I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you mean by connect to them. You have the.
I want to connect to my document file.
Do you have that window open on your computer?
I do now, so let's see if.
So if you go to share screen, it should allow you to choose the window that does document.
Let me try and see if this, see if this works. Okay, can people, is that visible on the screen and any plan?
Not seeing anything.
No. Okay, I think, I think I'm there now. Okay, can we see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, and turn it.
That's the list of abudders. Oh, no, it's not.
Okay, this is the, so I've got a couple of documents here. One is, this is a site plan along with an aerial and one showing distances from neighboring houses. And then I've got a separate document that I can open that has all the architectural plans in it. So now that we've got the site plan up on the screen, Mr. Witkowski, if you want to.
I, I don't have a site plan.
Mr. Chairman, what you want to do?
I don't have.
I've got your list of all the, all the plans that you have on file. Want to click that 14 Mayflower Circle?
Oh, I thought I did, all right, let's. Is that visible?
No.
No, same.
So, so John, if you go to share your screen again, you have to select the window that the, the picture is actually open in. You have the, the list on, of your, on your desk.
Okay, so let me, let me stop sharing, start, maybe start over.
Yep.
All right, let's see if this works. Is that it?
There it is.
Okay. Sorry, everybody. Okay, Mr. Witkowski, do you want to explain to us what you're proposing to do?
Sure. Let's see if I can describe best I can. So in the center, you have the, the house as it stands with the deck on the back right. So looking at the front of the property, on the left-hand side, we're going to extend a third bedroom. That is the addition to the left, yep, right there.
Yeah, okay.
And then on the right-hand side, we're going to hopefully attach a in-law with a common mudroom. And that, the dwelling on the right is a, you know, a small in-law with a mudroom in between.
Okay, and before I go to the other diagrams, can you describe how many rooms are in the existing house?
The existing house has two bedrooms and a finished basement. It's probably about 1,000 square feet on the, the main level.
Okay, and we'll show the architectural plans in a moment, but how many bedrooms will be in the addition?
Well, there'll be the, the third bedroom on the left-hand side addition. And then the in-law will contain two small bedrooms and then an open living kitchen space.
And who is the in-law going to be used by?
My parents.
Okay, all right, let me just show everybody the other two views that are in this document. So this is, this is an aerial showing the driveway here. And the addition will basically be behind where the driveway is now, correct? I mean, the, the in-law addition.
Yeah, basically where you see those two vehicles now, it won't, it won't go past the back of the deck and it won't go past the front of the house. So right, right about where those vehicles are.
Okay, how much parking will you have then? Are you going to widen this part of the driveway or if you're going to lose this area here?
Yeah, just to the right, a background where there's a couple of small shrubs. We're going to take those out and plenty of parking for.
Okay, and then the addition to the main house is where my little hand is located now, correct?
Exactly, it will be flush on the rear and then about four feet setback on the front.
Okay, and this is 16 Mayflower Circle over here to the right of your house, correct? And it isn't shown on this area, but the driveway for 16 Mayflower is off to the right of the house there. And this view here shows the measurements to every neighboring house from the in-law addition, which after all is our main concern, because the, the small addition over here, you know, isn't, he doesn't need a special permit for that. So I see 95 feet to 16 Mayflower, 125 feet to, I think this is 15 Mayflower across the street, 135 Street to this house here, 140 Street here, 295 to this house, which is on Old Thai Street. So now let me, if everybody's okay with that, I'm going to close out of this and go to the architectural plans. I'm going to stop sharing the screen for a minute while I take care of that. Okay, and now. All right, I'm getting a little, can everybody see this now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm getting a little, getting a little better at this. So this is a front view of here's the existing house, the addition of the extra bedroom, and this is the, the addition for the in-law. And I'm going to go through here to let's see. I think this page here maybe shows best, yeah. I think this is the one that shows the floor layout best for the entire house. And, oh, and let me go to the, then, I'm going to go to the, the, the elevations, okay. So this one is the front elevation. This is the right elevation. So that would be the view from looking at the house, the right end of it facing, somewhat facing 16 Mayflower. Over here is the left elevation, and this is the rear elevation of the house. Mr. Witkowski, any, any, I just, anything extra? So the, the entrances into the addition, you have the entrance through the mudroom. And is there any other entrance or exit from the addition? The in-law addition?
The only, the, the main front entrance would be correct, through the mudroom, and then you swing right. And then from the rear view, you can see they have a double door and a single door, it looks like coming from the kitchen space.
Okay, so this is, so the, the only other entrance to the in-law addition is at the rear of the house.
Yeah, there's two entrances, the left and the second to the left, and then there's a rear mudroom door. And then all the way to the right is the existing rear entrance to our house.
Right, okay. Okay. I'll leave that up there. Let me read a couple of letters into the record and then we'll go to questions from members of the board. First, from the planning board at the September 22nd, 2020 meeting, the board reviewed the plan for 14 Mayflower Circle. The planning board has no recommendation due to insufficient information on the plan, sincerely Eric Pretorius, Chairman. And let's see, do I have anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, Board of Health, Whitman Board of Health has no objection to the petition of Andrew Witkowski and Sarah Lynn Bowden to construct an in-law apartment at 14 Mayflower Circle. The town of Whitman, water sewer master file indicates this home is connected to municipal sewer and water. So with that, I'll go to members of the board for their questions. Mr. Cacciatore?
No questions, not yet.
Okay, Mr. Keeman?
I have no questions.
Mr. Andrews?
I have no questions, but I have a comment. The site plan, the plain site plan that has the distances to the abutting houses, just that they don't show where the abutting houses' driveways are in relation to 14. But other than that, I don't have any comments on it.
And that's why I did note, because I did take a look at that, that the driveway for the nearest house on the same side of the street to, for 16 Mayflower Circle, the house to the right of his, the driveway to that is on the far side away from his property. So.
That's the, that's the only comment I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blaws?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. The existing driveway, is it, how is that going to be altered?
Mr. Witkowski, are you?
Yep.
Wandering in the driveway all the way to the street or, that wasn't clear to me how you're going to walk?
No, the entrance will remain the same, a single lane, and then we will widen the, the back end of it. You can't see from the, the aerial footage, but there's a couple of shrubs that will be moved and it will be plenty wide for the vehicles that we need. But the existing entryway will remain the same.
So how many total bedrooms will you have?
Altogether, there will be five, three and two.
Three and two. How many, how many cars will be?
Four vehicles, max.
How many, how many cars will be able to fit in the driveway?
Four total, and then you, I mean, you can pack in more behind us, but four comfortably.
Four comfortably, okay. Um, it, it seems as though, now this is all one, one story, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, is it, I guess this is more of a question to Mr. Curran. Is, this appears to be about the, about 100 feet wide. Is that, that seems a bit unusual for a residential dwelling. Am I, am I correct there, especially on a single level?
Yeah, typically you would have a, say a 36-inch wide main house with a 10-inch, 10-foot breezeway and then a 24-foot garage. That would be average, medium-sized home.
So that's 60, 70 feet?
Yeah, my, my house, brand new, single family, is 84, I believe. So it, yeah, it's a little bit more than, well, it's certainly more than average.
And there's no garage?
There is no garage.
Well, I mean, the big thing is that the, the abudders were notified and there either are no abudders on this call or we're no letters. Okay, I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Witkowski, just have a couple of questions. First, I guess I'll just observe, you know, I was frankly concerned by, you know, the size of addition versus the size of the house. But when I look at it, the existing house is a pretty small house and you're sort of on the side, you, you, the property sort of slopes down to the street from your house. And I, as I recall going by, this is kind of slope upwards to the rear, Mr. Witkowski?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it wouldn't be easy to put something like an L-shaped addition, it looks like, on the house. And no other like, did, did you consider just adding the second story to your house?
Uh, yeah, this was by far the more cost-effective route to take in utilizing the, the kind of, the shape of the lot. This is what ended up working best.
Right, and I will, I'll also note that I, one of the other set, plans in this set of plans, am I correct that there will not be any basement, nothing more than a crawl space? The in-law addition and the addition with the third bedroom?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not, you're not adding sort of space beyond what's in the basement that you have in the existing house?
Right.
And I, I will say again, having observed the property, you're quite a distance away from 16 Mayflower Circle, because your sort of road sort of takes a bend at your house. And there's a lot of. And the other thing I'll observe is that 16 Mayflower Circle is a really big house. That's two stories and I don't know how long that is, but that's got to have five or more bedrooms in that house, just, just looking at it. So it's just a way of saying that I don't think your house with the addition will be out of character for the neighborhood. The last comment I'll make is just that, which I do with everybody who proposes an in-law is just to make the point to them that indeed, an in-law apartment is only for a family member. And if they should stop using it, you cannot use this as a two-family with an unrelated person living there. And secondly, if you sell the house, the new owner has to come in and get a special permit if they want to use it as an in-law as well. So I always just want to make sure that the applicants are on notice about that. Do any of the members have any more questions about the plans? Otherwise, I'm going to close that window so we can all see each other again. Anybody need to see it anymore?
No.
Okay. Okay, do people have any, any further questions or comments on this before I close the hearing? All right, then I am going to close the hearing and what's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Blaws.
Yeah, now this just required, this is just a, what, a site plan approval?
Special permit for the in-law apartment.
Okay, no variance is required. Okay, I move to approve the special, the request for a special permit for the in-law at 14 Mayflower Circle.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Keeman. Any further discussion? All right, I'm going to take a roll call vote on this. Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Cacciatore? You're muted, Stephen.
There you go, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, the answer is yes. I motioned to approve, but then you didn't hear me, that's all right.
Mr. Andrews?
No.
No, and myself, John Gold Rosen, yes. So the vote is four to one in favor and it's approved. So you're all set, Mr. Witkowski. And we'll get out the decision in about two weeks, but you can, you know, speak to Mr. Curran about what the procedure is going forward.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. So I see, I think we're going to be ready to go into the next hearing. Sorry, we're a bit late, we got started a little late. So I see Mr. Rosen and Mr. Kavicki, if you want to unmute yourself now. Okay, I'm going to read the application into the record. This is case number 14. Location of property, 531 535 Washington Street. Type of district, general business. Type of structure, proposed addition. Owner's name, 531 Millie's LLC. Owner's address, post office box 128 Whitman. When did you acquire this property? August 2020. His application had filed with town clerk, yes. Has any previous appeal? As any previous appeal been made, no. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, site plan approval. Reason for asking relief. Builds, I can't make out the number of square feet, is six hundred and twenty-four square feet addition to the back of the building. This case was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on October twenty-second and twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Andrews, Mr. Blas, Mr. Keeman, Mr. Cattrory, and myself, John Gold Rosen. At this time, we'll have a reading of the list of abutters. Mr. Blas, are you able to do that?
Yes, sir. The following is a list of parties of interest in accordance with the requirements of the State Zoning Act for the property located at five thirty-one, five thirty-five Washington Street, book five three one five zero, page one six five. Beverly M.R. Henderson, C.S.W. Realty Trust, Gloria Nito Fulton, Eleanor M. Brown, M&amp;G Whitman Real Estate LLC, Town of Whitman, Holy Ghost Rectory, Danica Corporation, Alice W. Palowski, and Congregational Church.
Thank you. The, the plan, let me connect us to that. Mr. Rosen? Let's see, did Mr. Kavicki leave? All right, Mr. Kavicki is no longer on the line. Mr. Rosen, the only plan we got was like a mortgage plan. Is there another plan for this? I'm sorry, Richard, you're, you're muted.
How's that?
That's good.
Thank you. I was advised that I could simply use even a sketch or a small plan without entire site plan drawn, where it was such a simple request and frankly, building one wall that affected no one except me. And it was a site plan approval.
All right, well, let me put up the just so the board has it, there's the plan that was submitted. Does this plan show the addition?
Well, actually, whoops, sorry, John, I showed, I showed two plan, I submitted two plans. And the second was similar, but it showed the here I am trying to point to it. I showed where the addition was going, right where that hand is to the left that's sticking out, and just simply running a wall to the right. Exactly right, that's the whole. I thought I submitted another plan, John, that had, it was red ink, and it showed that that wall was thirty-seven feet long, and the distance between the back of the building and that thing is sixteen feet. So I actually submitted two plans.
Okay, I, I could go looking for it now, I suppose, but it would, that's basically your squaring, not squaring, but your building out that side. So why don't you go ahead and describe to us what, what extent of it is and what it's for?
So, well, thank you for having me tonight. It's kind of odd. It's, I'd much rather see you all in person. But anyway, several years ago, I bought the building to the right, which was Getchel's old building. And that has, yes, exactly right there, and that has now ABC Sports, which has been there for years, as well as the nail salon. And so I bought that a number of years ago, recently bought the Millies block. So now I own the entire block. Since I bought the Millies block, I have spent a considerable amount of money re-siding the entire block, doing the roofs of the entire block, and doing the entire parking lot out back over, as well as repointing some bricks on the town parking lot end, which would be the left side of that. So one of the, so there's three units in the Millies block. Millies, the cigar place in the middle, and then the one to the right was some type of a used furniture. I don't know what it was. But the tenant left, and it needs to be completely renovated. Nothing has been done inside that block in many years. So if, if you look at, at what you're looking at, Millies, that little thing that sticks out right there, I believe that that must have been added some years ago. And the Getchel block to the right sticks out. Again, it's, it's only sixteen feet. So that whole section in the middle is nothing. And I just thought that it would be a good I've spent all this money on the block, I'm going to rehab the unit. I thought that it would be good for the tenant that's there and any potential tenants, just to simply have another three hundred square feet. It really affects nobody or anything. I'm, I'm, it really has no effect, derogatory effect on any abutter or anything else. It's just, I'm the I'm the only abutter, I guess. And that's pretty much it.
So will, I?
I'm building one wall.
Is it sort of going to just continue the back line of the, of the Getchel building?
So if you, if you went up Church Street, pulled in the parking lot that has since been redone over, and looked at the back, you would see the two buildings sticking out with a space in the middle. Now you're going to see it's just a wall that connects both, you, you won't know that it was never there. It's going to connect both buildings, and the siding will be restarted like the rest of it.
Okay.
It's a void. It's, it's a waste of space.
And will this, will all of this extra space go with this right-hand unit, or will be split between?
Split right down the middle. There'll be three, there'll be approximately three hundred and twelve feet for each unit.
Okay. All right. All right, let me read, I have a couple of letters to read into the record, and then we'll go to questions from the board. From the planning board, at the October thirteen, twenty twenty meeting, the board reviewed the plan for five thirty-one, five thirty-five Washington Street. The planning board recommends denial due to insufficient site plans. The board recommends that the applicant obtain a copy of the rules and regulations for site plan approval and hire a licensed surveyor to produce a sufficient site plan showing the abutter, driveways, locust map, proper scaling, et cetera, as well as provide an explanation as to what the addition will be used for when they bring this to the zoning board. Sincerely, Eric Petrucci, as chairman. From the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health has no objections to the petition of five thirty-one Millies LLC for a proposed addition at five thirty-one, five thirty-five Washington Street. The Town of Whitman's water sewer mastiffile indicates this building is connected to municipal sewer and water. Sincerely, Barbara White, Chair. Okay. And Mr. Curran, can I just ask you to comment? First, all that's needed is site plan approval. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that's all that's required. I met Mr. Rosen on the site over there, and I had said, unfortunately, you're going to have to submit a site plan. The lot is pretty much all building. It makes sense for maintenance of the building to just square that off. The roofs don't work the way they should. It's my opinion that this is beneficial for the building and makes it easier to maintain. And yet, site plan approval, site plan approval is all that's required.
All right, and there's no, there's no parking requirement in this district? So that adding to the square footage of the building doesn't change any parking requirements? Am I correct?
He is a downtown business, and they can use on-street parking as well as, as well as any parking they can provide on-site.
Okay. And, and, and one more question, Mr. Curran. What kind of plans will he have to submit to you in terms of doing the addition, if this is approved?
They will submit a stamp drawing from a, an ar- an ar- licensed architect that will show the construction of the addition.
Okay.
As far as the site plan, I, I agree with the planning board somewhat, that it's not a typical site plan that is required by the zoning bylaws. However, knowing contours and drainage for this isn't really going to make a big difference. It's just going to be a single-story addition with, I think it's going to be a rubber roof, Mr. Rosen.
I believe it is.
Yeah. So it, it just makes sense to square off the building there. In fact, I think it was my idea.
Okay. I'm going to close out this, this view of the plan. I can always bring it back if we, if we need to. Okay, and just.
Can I, can I say one more thing, John? Normally, I go before the, the planning board. Whenever I have come before the appeals board over the last several years, I've always gone before the planning board. Obviously, I, I didn't in this case. It, it's, it's very difficult under the circumstances to do a meeting anywhere, but I mean, that's not an excuse. It was also so simple that I didn't think it would be that important. The other thing is, since I've done the parking lot over in the back, when I say done it over, I've I cleaned it up, graded it out. I probably have room now for about sixty to seventy cars, which I did not have in the past. So there was way more than ample parking that goes along with this. That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions from members of the board? Mr. Cattrory?
What is that space going to be used for? It's not for seating, so I don't see why parking would be a problem if it's not for seating.
No, I, whatever, so I don't have a tenant lined up for the, for the one that I'm renovating. It was just giving a tenant more floor space, whether it be storage or retail sales. And the other one is the cigar guy, who I don't even know if, if he knows that I'm going to add on to the back of his building. But I mean, it makes sense, like Mr. Curran said, to square up the building and add a few hundred feet. It makes it a more valuable space.
What would be, what would be the total square footage of the, the units when you're done?
Um, roughly, my guess would some, be somewhere around eleven to twelve hundred square feet each.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Cattrory?
No, nothing, no.
Okay, Mr. Keeman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Curran?
The zoning bylaws regarding parking require one space for each three hundred square foot of building space. So this would add an additional two spaces. And there's plenty of parking there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Keeman?
I have no questions.
Right. Mr. Andrews?
Yes, I have a, a copy of the other site plan that's in black. And it's all been drawn in with red, red ink or something. Was that drawn in by hand, or did the original land surveyor fill that in, Richard?
No, I filled that in way to depict what I was doing as an addition.
All right, and the only other question I have, you just said you have parking now for sixty to seventy cars in the back. If I'm not mistaken, when the church came before the zoning board, that parking lot was supposed to be paved and lined for parking for the residents of the church building, and it's never been done. So, so are you, are you going to pave that and line the spaces for the residents to park in? Before you use the regular parking?
So that parking lot, I had some in-depth discussion, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. But Bob and I had talked about it several times, and frankly, I'm glad I didn't pave it in the back then. If the board is telling me to pave it, I'll pave it. Do I think it should be paved? Probably not.
That was part of the original decision.
I don't remember.
Yeah, it was. And I'm just wondering, because a couple of times over the years, I've been going to ask you about it, and I keep slipping, forgetting. But I would assume you would leave enough parking there, so if your tenants wanted to park there, they could.
There is, frankly, there's twice as much parking there today as there was six months ago. There is ample room for, so there's fifteen units in the church. Only twelve of them have cars. So my guess is that there's probably fifteen cars that come out of that building, and then there's four cars at fifteen South Ave. I have way more than our park. I think the discussion that we were having about paving it had to do with creating, you know, any potential drainage issues and having a less pervious topping on the property. It's been done over with processed gravel.
Yeah, I, I've been over there twice in the last week, and those machines are all, got it all torn up again. The bulldozers and the trucks and all. So you'll have to go over it again, but I was just wondering if you were going to pave it or not. I have no problem with what you want to do. I think it's a good idea. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Blas?
Is, is, does the building have a basement?
Yes, both buildings have basements.
Will the basement be enlarged as well?
No. No. There's one, there's one basement that goes under the Millies block. And it's not really, I can walk in there, you probably can't. That, it won't be changed, no. I'm not putting a basement under that addition, no.
So do you have to pour a footer back there?
There, there'll be a footing put in by the guy that does all my foundations. Bob will have the plan. So there'll be, it'll be, you know, four feet deep or whatever it's required. So yes, there'll be a footing back there. Yep.
Okay, all right, no other questions?
Okay. My only, well, I'll just make a comment on this, on the site plan issue. I mean, I, I have a slight concern, at least in that, you know, we make everybody, even homeowners putting an addition on their building, go to the trouble and expense of giving us a plan, but I, I'd be okay with this. That's why I asked Mr. Curran what plans he's going to require. I guess I'd be okay with this, as long as we have a condition that, you know, a set of plans to the satisfaction of the building inspector be provided at the time of the application for building permit. Would that cover it, Mr. Curran?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, at, at least like that, so we're still getting plans, even if sort of after the fact. And that's, that's really, I guess that the only other thing would be just that indeed, you're going to, now that you've cleaned up the, the parking area, that you're going to keep it, you know, that way, so that, well, you've told us about the amount of parking. We'll, we'll hold true. Is that, is that the case? I'm, I'm not, I don't care whether it's paved.
Absolutely, because I'm going to tell you something. It, not only does it look a whole lot better than it did, functionality-wise, it, it makes my life much easier to put all these cars in there during a snow event or a rain event or anything like that, or just simply to get them off the street. So no, it it's a, it's a great asset to have that lot back there.
I'm assuming it might be helpful for your restaurant as well. If, if and when, if and when you can, we'll use the restaurant.
John, I would love, I would love to hope that I need that parking space for the restaurant in the near future.
Okay. All right, there are no, I'll just note for the record, there are no other members of the public present. Mr. Kavicki was on the line, but he left as soon as the hearing began, so maybe once we explain what the purpose of the project was, that satisfied him. Anything else from members of the board? All right, then, at this point, I'm going to close the hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? The request is for a site plan approval. Make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the site plan.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bob. Go ahead, Bob. I'll make the motion to approve the site plan.
We accept the condition that a full set of plans be submitted satisfactory to the building inspector be submitted at the time of the building permit application, okay?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second if you can hear me.
Yes, I can. Seconded by Mr. Cattrory. Any further discussion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Cattrory?
Yes.
Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes, the, uh, motion is approved. And, uh, you're all set, Mr. Rosen?
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Yeah, thank you, good night.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Blas, we approved all the minutes before you got on, so we're all set on that.
John? Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you close, could I, uh, ask a question of Bob?
Sure.
Uh, Bob, uh,
Within reason.
You, you must have sent off a letter to the, uh, Columbia, uh, a place up here on Temple Street because that parking lot's been completely empty for seven days straight.
Yeah, I sent the letter eight, eight days ago.
Yeah, well, well, it, the, the day before the election, it emptied out and it hasn't been a car in there since, so you're getting somewhere there.
Yeah, um, Wayne, just so you know, I thought Conservation was gonna handle that, so I didn't send out a letter. And when nothing happened, I decided to send it out. And the very next day, I noticed the parking lot was empty, so, yeah, so it works.
This is the first time it's been empty for more than one or two days since last March.
Yeah, okay, good.
So they got the letter, obviously. I just wanted you to know that.
Well, and I don't know if the rest of the board has seen that, uh, Columbia Autobody to the, towards, uh, to the right side of that site. They added, they filled in wetlands and added an additional parking, parking area out towards, out near Temple Street. Um, and I had just given them an order to discontinue the use of that parking. Um, and they'll probably have to come back to this board for an additional site plan.
And probably have to go to the Conservation Commission, I assume.
I, you know, I've got a feeling they're in violation in a big way over there, so, um, either way, we're gonna sort this out.
Okay, all right, let me cut it off there since it's not an agenda item. All right, so our next meeting is Monday, December seventh. We have three cases. There's, uh, can't remember if it's an in-law or an addition on Coholand Drive off of Old Mansion, there's Essex Street, the storage units wants to do something there and something up on High Street on a residential property. So, and who knows, maybe, uh, Carol, and, and not, anything else come in since that?
No, no.
So that'll take care of us until the new year and who knows, maybe by then we can get back into Town Hall, but the next one in December will, will have to be an online meeting again because we're already setting that up and scheduling it and getting the ads ready and everything, so that's going to have to stay that way.
All right.
All right, uh, with that, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, motion by, was that by Mr. Blas to adjourn?
Yes.
And, uh, thanks, thanks, Dick, by the way, for jumping on the line.
Oh, yeah, I was out, I was out in the garage trying to fix my chainsaw. My neighbor's tree branch came down, took, then put two big holes in my, my really nice fence. So, and then my, my chainsaw won't start.
All right, thank you. Uh, second to adjourn? Second on the motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Listen, guys, for lack of a second, we gotta stay on.
So we all have to stay in line. Okay, I'll take the, uh, vote. Uh, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Cattrory?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes. The meeting is adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Hope you get to
Thank you.
celebrated in some fashion.
Thank you.
Thank you, night off. Thank you.